All right, we are ready to go.
Very good. Well, we have a quorum and it is 4:30. I'll just wait till we click to 4:31 here and then get rolling. We have a little housekeeping to do, so perhaps any council members who are not on yet will will come on. Okay. Seeing we're coming to 4:31. I'm seeing Councilmember Hall, Councilmember Hardy, and Councilmember Chateau. Vice Mayor Doring has yet to come on. But I think we've got a little housekeeping to go through and can get rolling with that and get the meeting started. So I'd like to welcome folks to the City of St. Helena, special city council meeting Tuesday, June 28, 2022. These are our, this is our applicant interview meeting. And we'll begin with the pledge of allegiance. If folks can mute your microphones and follow with me, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We'll move then to our roll call, please.
Mayor Elsworth.
Here.
Vice Mayor Doring. Absent. Councilmember Hardy.
Here.
Chateau.
Here.
Paul.
Here.
And Cindy, can, I think we need to circle back and just give a quick introduction on the remote access and the Spanish language.
Let me let me share my screen just one moment. Participate by using public comment by phone. You would dial 669-900-6833. At the prompt, you'd enter the meeting ID, which is 860-5848-4004, and press the pound key. During public comment, you would hit star nine to speak.
Thank you. And also, we want to make folks aware that simultaneous Spanish interpretation services during meetings can be scheduled upon request to ensure interpreters are available. Requests must be made at least 72 hours in advance by calling the office of the city clerk at 707-968-2640, or emailing cityclerk@sthelena.org. So with that, then, we'll move down to our adoption of the agenda. I'll look to our city clerk to see if there are any changes in today's agenda.
There are none.
Okay, very good. We'll move down to public comment. Now, public comment under California law.
Do you want to adopt the agenda?
Oh, I'm sorry. So we'll, we'll need a motion in a second, please, on adoption of the agenda. Thank you.
I move approval of the agenda.
I'll second the motion.
Councilor Chateau?
Yes.
Hardy?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Mayor Elsworth.
Yes, thank you. So then we'll move, public comment in special meetings are limited to the subjects on the agenda only. Therefore, public comment will take place during consideration of the item. Each person's comments shall be limited to four minutes. We'll discuss that a little bit as we get into the item. So we'll move now to new business, and this is item 6.1. And these, these are our applicant interviews for the Planning Commission, for the Active Transportation and Sustainability Committee, for the Library Board of Trustees, and for the Parks and Recreation Commission. On a number of these, we have, the applicant pool fits the, what the need is pretty closely. We'll hear the interviews in this meeting, and then as we get into our regular scheduled city council meeting, we'll have our discussion in terms of bringing applicants on board. One of the things that was let me just circle back here just a little bit. I think we'll get to that in a little bit. So my thought here is to hold public comment till the end. If there's any public comment on the interviews, we'll have that all at the end. I think that will streamline things to be most effective. We're looking at, as I said, we have two applicants for Planning Commission. And when we will start with doing the interviews, and I would say, if you take three or four minutes and just tell us a little bit about yourself and what you can bring to the, to the commission that you're interested in applying for. And if, if there's any other council input at this point, before we go forward with the interviews or any input from our city manager, we'll hear that before we start. And I'm seeing no input here, so why don't we just get rolling into our interviews? And we'll start with the Planning Commission. We have two two applicants, and I think if we do it alphabetically and begin with Mr. Fowler, and then move to Mr. Warner. Mr. Fowler, do you have three or four minutes to sort of introduce yourself and sort of what your skills that you want to bring to the county or commission?
Yeah, I do. When you said we were going to start alphabetically, I thought you were going to start with Chris. Let's see. So I just basically prepared a little statement and said, since thank you for the opportunity to be considered for seat on the Planning Commission. Let me start by saying that Chris Warner is an excellent candidate for the Planning Commission seat. As for myself, I can bring a history of growing up in St. Helena and watching it change over time. Before moving back to St. Helena four years ago, my wife and family and I spent nearly 18 years in Truckee. I watched it grow from something similar and feel to what St. Helena was back in the 80s to what Truckee is today. When the recession happened, Truckee, its downtown area, turned into ghost town for a couple of years. It was heartbreaking to watch. Housing prices tanked, and there were many, many vacant storefronts. Though I don't see housing prices plummeting here in the near future, it would be nice to see the city work with building owners of some very long vacant storefronts. And with housing prices likely continuing in an upward trajectory, if St. Helena wants to continue to be a viable inviting place for families, residents, and workers, some serious thought needs to be put into how the city moves forward. Since moving back to St. Helena, joining the Planning Commission has been on my mind with the period of reintegrating into the community and watching how things ebbed and flowed. I want my children to see the community grow and thrive. I want to see the same sense of community my parents shared with me. I want this to be a thriving town again. We all want that. And I think it will, I think it will take measure, calculation, and some level-headed leaps of faith. Growing up here, I have fond memories of occasional dinners with Adi Hay, who lived around the corner from us. In high school, I was part of a group of students who initiated and started videoing city council meetings at the Carnegie Building that were broadcast locally. I worked closely with Dorothy Guard to help create the city's first skate park with movable plywood features on old asphalt at Crane Park. I think sensible growth can happen. I think a very good starting point is with the zoning ordinance update that is about to happen or is in the process of happening for the 2040 general plan. However, the zoning created in the future, it needs to be created in a well-thought-out and enforceable way. The Planning Commission and the city as a whole have missed some prime opportunities to help create housing for a number of working middle-class people because their hands were tied with unenforceable zoning regulations. Though I have a background in real estate, I wouldn't consider myself pro-growth, nor for that matter, would I consider myself no-growth person either. The new zoning ordinances need to have a backbone to them. They need to be enforceable. The city needs some life and fresh blood injected into it. St. Helena needs to measurably stop doing things the way they have done in the past. Citizens of my generation, of Commissioner Anderson's generation, of the generation that is younger than me, need to start stepping forward to guide the town in a direction we want to see it go. We're the ones who will be here for a long time to come. We're the ones raising young families in a special place, though not, though not likely to agree on everything. We may have different visions. But it's obvious that the measures put in place by previous commissioners and council members going way back, as well as intentioned as they may have been, just aren't working in an effective manner for the time we're living now. Let's move forward together as a community. And that's what I got. I'm open questions.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And I want to welcome, Vice Mayor Doring had texted me that he had had a computer issue, but he is with us now. Is there, are there any questions from council here at this point? And I'm seeing no hands. I want to make sure to thank everybody that's here and everybody that's applied. It's just so critical to have this community engagement and, and folks from the community as we are on the council. Folks stepping up and wanting to participate. So just want to say thank you to everybody. Thank you, Mr. Fowler. And now we will move to Mr. Warner.
Great. Thank you, Mayor Ellsworth, and city council members and, and staff, and Jim McCann as well. And I just want to pass along a reciprocal compliment to Chris Fowler as well. I think it's so good that people are volunteering and engaging in the community and the fact that we have such a robust group of people volunteering to help serve the community, mostly on their own time and on their own dime, that's really great. And that's what, what I love about St. Helena. I think I know many of you, I think you know me as having served on the Parks and Recreation Committee. Michelle's on here. I serve with Michelle. But also, my wife and I have been up here for five years. We love St. Helena. We came five years ago from Marin. I've had experience in all sorts of public and private engagements. I think my main interest in, in the Planning Commission is that that comes out of my legal and, and public experience. I've been involved in land use and environmental and public service all part of my life. I served on probably one of the largest land use commissions in the state of California, the Bay Conservation and Development Commission, where I think there were 28 different members, and I was the only attorney on the commission. But it was really a great experience for collegiality and collaboration. And that's what really I think I can bring to help the city, as I think I have been doing in a volunteer capacity, to help bring collegiality and collaboration to the city that my wife and I love very much now for five years. I think one of the aspects that I'm most interested in is the, the leadership of the city council and the mayor, as well as the other members of the Planning Commission, in setting a tone for really bringing the city forward, consistent with the general plan, consistent with the character and the needs and the challenges of the city. My experience, as some of you know, has been more recently in the wildfire prevention area. I've enjoyed working with many of you in that area. I could, would, will still continue to do that. I think it's a real important issue for the, the city, but there are other issues as well. And I think Chris Fowler mentioned some of them. I think we, we really have an opportunity to, to sustain the character of, of this wonderful city, this wonderful town, while at the same time providing for a growing and sustained, robust economy, as well as providing housing, you know, the housing element update that the, the Planning Commission is engaged, engaged in right now is absolutely essential for the, the city. And I have reviewed the, obviously as part of my preparation for this, reviewed the the zoning ordinance, the, the general plan, and other aspects that really will guide and should guide the Planning Commission. So I'm happy to try to volunteer and continue to serve the community. And again, I'm really happy to be involved in an opportunity to collaborate and be collegial with fellow commissioners and with the city council itself. And I'm open as well to any questions you might have.
Thank you. And I'll look to for questions in just a moment, just to get the vice mayor up to speed. My suggestion for public comment was to hold that until the end of all the interviews and then see if there was public comment at that point.
Thank you.
Thank you. But at this point, we'll see if there's any question or input from council. I'm seeing none. Thank you, Mr. Warner. And we'll now, we'll now move to Active Transportation and Sustainability Committee, Active Transportation and Sustainability Committee members Glenn Smith, Leslie Stanton, Madeline Chandler, and Catherine McDonald's term of office expired June 30, 2022. One alternate term expiring June 30, 2022, remains available, and the recruitment will be left open until filled. Three applications were received from Glenn Smith, Leslie Stanton, and Madeline Chandler. And we will look at the ATSC and begin with mistress, we'll see if Ms. Chandler is with us, if we do this alphabetically.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Yeah, I'm here. Um, thank you very much for this opportunity. Um, my name is Madeline Chandler, and I am an architect with a background in environment, environmental sustainability. I got my minor in sustainable environments, and I have my lead accreditation. We building core and design, or building design and construction. And so, yeah, I, I grew up in Northern California in a very beautiful place, and I think that instilled a need to protect the environment in me. And so having that background and also being very active, an active cyclist, runner, I walk all over town. So I think I can bring a lot to the table for the Active Transportation and Sustainability Committee, and I've really enjoyed the past couple of years being on the committee and getting to know everybody and being able to see how we can work together and how I can contribute my skills and my background. So that's about it. So thank you.
Well, thank you very much. Thank, thank you for being here. I'll look to our council. Any questions, input at this point? And with that, then, we'll move now to Mr. Smith, Glenn Smith. Oh, I think you're muted, Mr. Smith.
Thank you. Thank you, Jeff. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and city council members. First of all, thank you for entertaining my application to this committee yet again. I've been serving since 2015. That's seven or eight years and have really, really enjoyed the opportunity. It's wonderful to learn about all of the things that are going on in the city and keep in touch with the city's important issues, to learn more about those issues and to contribute as I can, what, what background I have and what experiences and what study I can do on the issues that the, that are brought to, to our committee. We've done a number of interesting projects, bike lane locations, water conservation strategies, IPM landscaping, where Maddy was particularly, Maddy Chandler was particularly important in that, in that regard. On the experiences I've had, I spent 18 years on, in the Master Gardener Program of the University of California, Berkeley and UC Davis, and worked a great deal on irrigation conservation in Marin County, mostly in Marin County, a little bit in, in Napa. And I also have quite an interest in, in water conservation, global warming, and landscape toxic chemicals. I've also served on, served the city on the shape committee. I volunteered in several of the COVID vaccination sites that we've had around with the Edvin's leadership. I'm on the Blue Zone Built Environment Committee, looking at healthy construction projects, particularly in St. Helena. And I was helpful in the RV to Paradise project, which took place about three years ago. What I particularly enjoy is the opportunity to help provide good guidance to the city administration and the, and the council as they wrestle with their various decision-making processes. And I do think that our most pressing issues in this town are water conservation, and Jeff, I know that's near and dear to your heart. And also auto and, and landscape appliance pollution, carbon and noise, and how we deal with those, and also pedestrian and bike safety in our community. And Maddy talked on that a little bit. So those are the things that I feel I have done, that I value and feel that I can contribute to the committee on an ongoing basis. So thank you again for entertaining my application.
Thank you. Appreciate it. You're here with us today. Any comment input from council at this point? Questions? And so we'll move now to Leslie Stanton, please.
Hi, everybody. I've, let's see, I don't like selling myself or anything, but currently, there's three generations of Stantons living in St. Helena. The, the first generation, that is not alive anymore, he bought property in the Napa Valley, where he saw there was going to be cloverleafs developed on the new freeway that would run up the valley, and he bought in Yountville, Oakville, and St. Helena to develop gas stations and, and hotels. Fortunately, that never happened, and I've always been happy with that. And at this point, the third generation is still here in St. Helena. They come and go because housing and jobs tend to be difficult for them. Fortunately, I'm stable, but and I particularly like living here. It's been, and I worked for the city for almost 35 years. I actually still consider myself a city worker because I volunteer at the library every day. I, I really sucked at retirement, which I retired two years ago. I still go in every day and help out. As budget changes have not replaced me, but I am very concerned with our environment, and I'll do whatever I can to help with that. I also have a deep love and affection for the children of this community, having seen three generations go through. I especially love the children that are coming back with grandmothers that I was a young mother with. I believe I have some credibility in this town. Some people know me. And I, I kind of feel that the commissions and committees are here to help the city council with getting information out, making these decisions, and moving on with steps to make our city a wonderful place to live. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions or input from council? Very well, those were our ATSC applicants. And so we'll move down to our Library Board of Trustees. Library Board of Trustee members Alexandra Haslip, Rebecca Went, Terry Wood, and Juliette Valmont's term of office will expire June 30, 2022. Five applications were received from Alexandra Haslip, Patricia Erickson, Suzanne Rumian, Terry Wood, and Juliette Valmont for four available terms. And I see we have some of our applicants or our applicants are here. And so for that, we will begin with Patricia Erickson, Ms. Erickson, please.
Thank you very much. Thank you for having me here. I am honored to have the opportunity to be considered for this position. Just, we'll give it, like Ms. Stanton, I don't particularly love selling myself, but I, I'll do a quick, quick overview to perhaps give you some relevant facts that may be relevant to this seat. A long-term, almost lifetime resident of the Southern Bay Area, south of San Francisco, raised three daughters there, and have only, am a very new resident to St. Helena, just under two years, but love it, have absolutely fallen in love. And I want to give to the community in the way that I always have in communities in which I have lived. So a couple of things specifically, one, I have a long-term professional record of experience in the venture capital industry. I'm currently the Chief Administration and Operations Officer for a venture capital firm, working remotely. And love that work. Think it's very important, especially for very young and, and just starting out, early-stage entrepreneurs, to support them. And then simultaneously, throughout my daughter's schooling, I have held several board positions, both at their, at the elementary level, and also at Notre Dame High School, where I had two consecutive positions there four years at a time, and absolutely was, couldn't have been more committed to that. Extremely important to me. Education is extremely important to me. And overall support of a robust community is very important to me. So when I saw the position for the Board of Library Trustees, I admit I have no direct experience there. However, again, I have a, I think, a long-term valuable business experience that could come to bear, and also frankly, just a love of learning, children, and education. I also think that libraries overall, I don't think, I know, we all know how they've all had taken a major hit, particularly in the last couple of years, and that they deserve a more robust support from any community. I think that they are critically important to the building and sustaining of a strong community in, in many ways. So when I ask for your consideration, I add that with all of this experience, I also believe that I would bring a sense of collaboration, problem-solving, and humility to, to the role. So thank you for your consideration. I very much appreciate your time.
Thank you for being here. I'll look to the council for any input or questions. And with that, then, we'll move to Alexandra Haslip. Is, is Ms. Haslip with us? I'm not seeing. And so then we will look to see, I see Ms. Rumian, Suzanne Rumian is with us.
Hi, good afternoon. Can everyone hear me?
We can hear you. Yes, thank you.
Hi, my name is Suzanne Rumian, and I've been a resident of St. Helena, along with my family, for over 20 years. We've raised our kids here. They've gone to local schools here, but for the majority of those 20 years, I lived and worked in San Francisco. So I was on many, many levels, very disconnected from life in St. Helena. I came home on the weekends. It, my family carried on, on many levels without me. And now, after all these years, I am finally home. I live and work locally for seven years. We, my husband and I were home caregivers to my father-in-law. And now we have even moved from Deer Park down into town. So I'm looking to become also more involved in a community that I've always loved, that I knew was the right decision 20 years ago to move to. And I want to do something in an area that I am most personally interested. I'm also a lifelong learner. I'm an avid reader. I enjoy books and always have, growing up without a television. I don't know if there's anyone left from that era. It was all we had. So it has sustained me in, during many, many, many difficult times. I read constantly. I have several books on my nightstand. And since I was a legal secretary, I worked for attorneys in San Francisco and Santa Rosa during all that time. I'm, I'm a confident, detail-oriented, collaborative person who enjoys getting together and talking about books informally. I'm very, very proud to have this opportunity, and I look forward to working with everyone here.
Thank you very much. Thank you for being here. Any questions or comment from council? So we'll move now and look to see, I believe, Ms. Valmont is here, Juliette Valmont. Welcome.
Yes, hello. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council. I appreciate the, being able to talk with you today. I've really enjoyed being on the Library Board of Directors for the trustee for the
Are we having an audio issue, Cindy?
Yes, I
Okay.
I've really enjoyed being on the Library Board of Trustees, so thank you for that. I've really enjoyed talking with other people. I have presented some different ideas to the library director that I'd like to be able to continue working with her on. And that is, one is a library of things, and we've been talking about the library of things and kind of enhancing that, going forward with that. But my idea was to do more of a design library of things, where we kind of bring in a lot of the different Where we kind of bring in a lot of the different um. Elements of a higher quality of cultural education. And have, you know, different classes and workshops, but also mediums and materials that people can check out. And be able to practice with and perform with. I think that's just gonna be a wonderful resource that we're gonna be able to develop. And enhance. So I'm really looking forward to continuing with that. I also came up with another idea to present that I would like to do a, a discussion, a monthly discussion on virtues. Which is something that Benjamin Franklin did um back in his era. And the four qualities that I was gonna start doing this fall is integrity, excellence, courage and appreciation. And doing this maybe a couple of different times for both um young people, the children, teenagers and also adults have a really great discussion on. These kinds of principles. I think that building character in a community is really, really important. And I think that's really coming back to this kind of process of a face-to-face relationship. In that way. And so I'm really, I'm really looking forward to continuing that. Also, another idea that I think that maybe Chris and I will be able to um go forward with a little bit further on is a professional one, which we, you have a library of people. Which like, we have so many amazing people in this community. I think with all their different professions, their different experiences and being able to have discussions with them more in a one-on-one format with. Young people interested in maybe developing their career, their educational interests and the different um. Things, you know, they might be love to know about personally. So I think that that's kind of a really beautiful and wonderful idea to kind of add into the library, expanding that reach. Out and integrating that with the community of many wonderful professionals that we have here. So I'm really excited about um being able to continue doing that on the library board of trustees. And I appreciate, thank you so much.
Thank you. Any question or comment from council? And seeing none, we'll move uh forward here. We'll look to see if Terry Wood is on Ms. Wood. I'm not seeing. Um, so we'll move um forward uh. And look to our uh Parks and Recreation Commission. This is Parks and Recreation Commission members Ty Taylor. Chris Warner and Michelle Deasy's term of office will expire June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. Three applications were received from Doug Boshin, Michelle Deasy and Ty Taylor for three available terms. And so uh we'll look um to see on our uh screen here, I'm seeing uh. Mr. Boshin, are you with us here?
Yes, I'm here.
Great. Uh, if you'd like to introduce uh yourself, say hello, a little bit about yourself and what you uh want to bring to the commission.
Yeah, sure. Uh, thank you for the opportunity. I can, I can be brief. My name is Doug Boshin. I have lived in St. Helena for seventeen years. I run a winery here in St. Helena. I have uh. With my wife, I have two teenage boys who have been raised entirely in St. Helena. I've been uh heavily involved in Parks and Record Recreation as a, a coach, as a parent. Uh, as a participant and I would say my family and I have benefited tremendously from. That involvement with, with Parks and Recreation and I would value the opportunity to. Contribute what I can to the ongoing success of the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for being here. Uh, I'll look uh to see if we have any question or comment from council. I'm seeing none, so we'll uh move and look uh to Ms. Deasy, Michelle Deasy, are you with us? Yes.
Hi, I'm here in my car. I did pull over, so I'm not gonna crash.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for having me. I have been on the Parks and Recreation Commission for three years now and have really enjoyed it, even though some of it has been. During COVID, so we really had no programming. So I'm excited that things are back up and rolling now. Uh, I am sitting on uh two committees, the Trails and Open Space Committee and also the uh Strategic Planning um Committee. So we are. At this point, working to um. Start to prepare an RFP, Parks and Recreation Strategic Plan. Um, sorry, I have a child in back. Um, let's see, I uh work in nonprofit. I do nonprofit operations, strategy and fundraising. Um, I've sat on a lot of nonprofit boards over time, so that's what I do for work. But um, the reason I'm most interested in Parks and Recreation is because I love outdoor activities. So uh, I was played, you know, national tennis tournaments. Um, growing up, I ran track in college. I was kind of a B-rate professional triathlete um as a, as a young adult. Um, and here in St. Helena, I'm coaching, uh, or I'm a volunteer with the Waves. And I am also uh. Engaged in my first season of the Bocchi League, which has been um a real treat. So. I've really enjoyed getting to know the community that way. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for being here. Uh, look to our council, see any question or comment here? And I'm seeing none. And I believe uh, we have talked or heard from everybody who's on the meeting. Uh, if I'm missing anybody, please speak up. Uh, so seeing that, what I'll do now is, is open um. Unless I see any council comment, I'll open the public comments, see if we have any public comment. I do not think so.
There are no attendees.
Okay, very well. I'll bring it back to, to the council and um, I just want to thank everybody. When we get to the next meeting, as I said, we're gonna pull this item. Uh, bring it forward a bit in the meeting so that uh, we'll, we'll uh, uh, look at it as uh soon as we can as the meeting starts. I'm seeing Councilmember Hall.
Thank you. I just wanted to thank everybody for applying for these uh boards and commissions. We, we have plenty of additional spaces, so. You know, tell your friends and spread the word. Um, and thanks for completing the paperwork and for uh committing time here today to the schedule to, to help us with this process. Much appreciated.
Great, thank you. Uh, so with that, uh, we will uh be adjourning the meeting and then uh if folks can uh tune in at uh. At six and we'll uh, we'll bring this forward as, as soon as we can uh early in the meeting uh and see everybody then. So thank you very much for being here.
Hi, thank you, everyone. Thank you.